Would like to call to order the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting of March 19, 2018. It's good to have everyone with us tonight. I would remind everybody to silence your cellphones and electronic devices. We are very proud to have with us tonight the Mount Pleasant Air Force JROTC from Mount Pleasant High School for our presentation of colors.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, arms.
Right, face. Bow.
After our invocation, we'll ask you all to come back to the podium and introduce yourself, and Commissioner Honeycutt will have a pen for you. We are very pleased to have with us tonight Pastor Peter Bynum from First Presbyterian Church in Concord for our invocation. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's a privilege to be with you all this evening, and I would invite you all to join with me in prayer. Let us pray. God of sovereign power and steadfast love, we come in prayer to you this evening to thank you for this county in which we are blessed to live. We commend our cities, towns, and neighborhoods to your care and our living give us all strength of purpose and a heart for others, that we may create in this county a community of welcome, where all people feel valued, a community of peace where all people feel safe, and a community of justice where your will is done. We thank you especially tonight for the blessing of public servants, for people who give selflessly of their time and energy for the good of us all. Bless these commissioners and all those who hold office in the government of this county, that they may do their work in a spirit of wisdom, kindness, and justice. Help them use their authority to serve faithfully and to promote the general welfare. That your righteousness and spirit may so move every human heart, that the barriers which divide us may crumble, suspicions disappear, and hatreds cease, and that with our divisions healed, we might live in justice and peace. Bless the work that is done here tonight, that it might not only honor the people of this county, but also your hopes for a peaceful and loving world. We pray all of these things in your holy name. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Bynum. We appreciate you being with us tonight. At this time, I'll ask our JROTC members to please come forward to the podium and introduce yourselves and tell us something that you like about participating in JROTC.
Hi, I'm Cadet Captain Trinity Ramos, and one thing I really like about the Corps is the instructors and the leadership aspect about it.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Caleb Burris, and I really like the aspect of being able to build in rank.
Great, thank you.
Hi, I'm Cadet Major Samantha Fellows, and one thing I like about JROTC is that we get to do color guards.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Cadet First Lieutenant Eric Lozano, and one thing that I enjoy about JROTC is the ability to get some semblance of leadership and some military experience, sort of.
Great, thank you. If y'all were to exit to my right, Commissioner Honeycutt has a pen that she would like to present to you, and we certainly appreciate you being with us tonight. We lost an important citizen here in Cabarrus County this past week, and we wanted to take a few moments to remember Max Edward Cruz Sr. And so I'll read a few statements that we've put together about Mr. Cruz, and then we'll observe a moment of silence afterwards. Cabarrus County lost an outstanding citizen on March 2, 2018. Max Edward Cruz Sr., born on October 15, 1936, was a lifelong resident of Cabarrus County and a graduate of Mount Pleasant High School. He was an active lifelong member of Cross of Christ Lutheran Church. Mr. Cruz donated his time and effort to many schools and farming-related activities. Mr. Cruz Sr. was the owner of Cruz Meats and was an instrumental figure behind Cabarrus County's first large-scale state-regulated meat processing plant, which dozens of cattlemen across 10 counties utilized. Cabarrus County partnered with Cruz Meats and the North Carolina Department of Agriculture and Consumer Goods to utilize an agricultural development and farmland preservation grant to expand his meat processing plant on Rhimer Road in Concord, North Carolina. The county facilitated the construction of a harvesting facility and wastewater treatment facility at the site. The design of the waste treatment system, well drilling, and well water analysis began in 2009. The design of the harvesting facility began in March of 2011, and the county completed the project in July of 2012. Mr. Cruz Sr. tried for many years to help the numerous cattle farmers of the community. He was always there to lend a helping hand to many people in need. The Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners paid tribute to Max Edward Cruz Sr., a valued citizen who worked tirelessly to improve the quality of life in Cabarrus County and beyond. We call upon all citizens of Cabarrus County to remember the extraordinary contributions he made in this community. And at this time, we'd like to just observe a moment of silence in memory of Mr. Cruz. Thank you. Okay, the first item on our agenda tonight is the approval and/or correction of the minutes, and you all have copies of those in front of you. Do I hear a motion to approve the meeting minutes as presented?
One full second, Chairman.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. I also wanted to recognize our youth commissioner, Napur Pareek, who is with us tonight. We're delighted to have you.
Thank you for having me.
Great. Next item is the approval of the agenda, including the changes to the agenda on page 290. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, before you entertain that motion, I think in discussion with the county manager, we wanted to add a matter under new business, G5, to approve the agreement, engagement letter agreement with the attorneys that the board had selected to represent the county in the opioid litigation. If we do that here as part of G5, we don't have to deal with it in closed session.
Okay, very good. Okay, so at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the meeting agenda, including the changes on page 90, as well as the addition to item G5.
One full second, Chairman.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes, and we move to recognitions and presentations. First up, from Active Living in Parks, is a recognition of Eddie Miller, his Eagle Scout service project at Rob Wallace Park, and we are pleased to have Brian Hagler and Alex Beck with us for that presentation.
Good evening. Byron Hagler, Assistant Director, Active Living in Parks. Cabarrus County has yet again received, been the recipient of another Eagle Scout project, and I have Alex Beck here, park program manager for Rob Wallace Park, to help give you the details of the project and recognize this young man for the services provided to the county. Thank you.
Hey, thanks for giving me a couple minutes to brag about my Eagle Scout over here. I'm pretty excited about his project. So he built eight wood duck boxes and installed them at Rob Wallace Park, and that's quite a feat. If you've ever dug a hole at Rob Wallace Park, you know, there's quite a bit of rock there. So not only did he build them and then install them, but what's really great is when he first came in to talk a little bit about projects, one of the things that came up was wood duck boxes on our list of running items that we'd like to put out there. And maybe a month or two earlier, we actually caught a wood duck on trail cam, so we knew it was a perfect opportunity to put these wood ducks out, especially with Phase 1 complete, being able to give something back and create some habitat for the wildlife. So he did it very quick with no complications. I never got a phone call from the Rangers saying, "This guy's digging holes in the park," so that was wonderful. And so for that, I'd like to give him, just Cabarrus County Active Living in Parks, is just an Eagle Scout recognition, a certificate of appreciation. And then when I was an Eagle Scout, or am an Eagle Scout, when I received my Eagle Scout award, I was given a wooden eagle, and it was hand carved, and it was wonderful. Now, I did not hand carve this one. I'm not that skilled. But I'd like to give you as a kind of a momentum of appreciation this hand carved wood duck. So it's hand carved, hand painted, and just to kind of carry on that legacy of a little wooden momentum to say thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Do you have anything you'd like to say, Eddie?
No.
No? Okay. Well, you had a shot. Well, congratulations to you for attaining Eagle Scout, and certainly for Alex as well. I mean, that's something that stays with you your entire life, and as I said to an Eagle Scout at our meeting last week, a great deal of appreciation also goes to Dad, because I know he was involved in that project as well. So we appreciate what you did. I had an opportunity to visit Wallace Park, I think it was Thursday afternoon of this week, and I was amazed at the number of people that were out in the park, and your work enhances that good experience for them. So thank you very much. We appreciate your service to our community.
Go.
Good luck.
Mr. Chairman, I do think that not only can he put Eagle Scout on his resume, but I think in that presentation, I heard "construction project that went quickly and without complication."
That's right.
You might want to put that on there as well, Eddie.
Yeah, we may want to sign him up permanently on staff. Okay, next up is a recognition from Human Services, and Jonathan Marshall's going to lead that.
I'm going to make a few brief comments, and then Jimmy Lentz is going to take over, but I think first, we should invite Alan Thompson, and certainly Alan, your family, and anyone else who wants to join you to come up front. This is one where I want to take the opportunity to make some brief comments, because Mike, Pam, and I are going to miss Alan on a professional and personal level. We know we're going to continue working with him, but we are going to miss him greatly on that day-to-day interaction. Hopefully, I won't offend anyone with this comment, but I will say that you probably have noticed the world is full of problem identifiers. There's a lot of people who can tell you what's wrong or what the issues are, but they don't often have solutions. So the one thing I want to highlight with Alan is Alan is a problem solver. When he comes to us with an issue or something that he knows needs to be addressed, Mike will attest to this, it's never verbal. It is usually a rather thick packet. He has analyzed the issue, he's analyzed the related issues, some issues related to that. He's given us the research, he's given us about five approaches, and at the end, he gives us the approach he thinks we should take, and of course, being intelligent people, we do. So I appreciate the fact that this is not someone who comes up and tells you what's wrong, this is someone who comes up and tells you how to fix things. And I think that's a legacy that he learned in our EMS service, and he has passed along in our EMS service. So with that, I'll turn this over to Jimmy.
I'll start off by saying, I hope he has passed that along with in our EMS service. Now, good evening. It is with both great respect and slight hesitation, we come before you this evening to recognize and honor an extremely distinguished EMS career of Alan Thompson. Alan has possessed a passion for public safety that started by serving as the citizens of Cabarrus County as a volunteer firefighter, first responder with the Mount Mitchell Volunteer Fire Department in the spring of 1985. This was followed by service to his country with the United States Army. He soon realized his interest in public safety was deeply instilled in him and progressed into a career at Cabarrus County EMS in January of 1990. Alan rapidly continued his education to gain his North Carolina Paramedic Certification, followed by the National Registry Paramedic Certification, and I believe you were the first nationally-registered paramedic in the county. His EMS career hit every level of employment, being junior partner, crew chief, field training officer, relief supervisor, shift supervisor, assistant EMS director, and obviously EMS director. Alan is often heard with new candidates speaking of how there's an EMS system for every medic, you just simply have to find your system. As we come together tonight to recognize this amazing career, I think we can all say with great confidence, Alan, you found your system. Thanks for the many years of passionate service to the citizens of Cabarrus County. I'd like to present a plaque that reads, "Presented to Alan Thompson, Cabarrus County EMS Director, for 30 years of faithful service and dedication in EMS, enjoy your retirement, presented this day of March, 2018." He's actually got his retirement date of the 29th.
So on behalf of the commissioners, I'm pleased to have the opportunity to give you this recognition for your 29 years. It's been a pleasure and an honor for me to watch you serve this community with your passion, your dedication, your commitment, and your determination to make sure that our citizens have the absolute best care possible, and we just want you to know how much we appreciate it and how we wish you great times in the future ahead, and we look forward to, as I said, still having access to you and those good ideas. So thank you so much for what you've done.
First, I just have to offer my thanks to God, to my family, to my wonderful EMS family, and to the leadership of this county, and all of those that I've had a chance to serve with over these years. I tell people that I've had the best job in the world, been around the greatest people, and have had the most fun over the course of my career. My focus has always been to try to put our community first and to try to do something for people in their time of need. And to do that, it requires being part of a system, and I can't think of a better place to be than Cabarrus County, because this is truly a system of all the different moving parts coming together with one focus, and that's to make sure that our citizens have the best chance of good outcomes from health and have the best chance to receive the services that they need. And I look back over my career, and I think back to when I started in 1985. I mean, Jimmy and I started together in the fire department. We started together at Cabarrus County. I had some time at Rowan before then. But knowing that this is the type of people that we have in this county, people that say, "You know what? We used to do this for free, but we wanted to do it for a living, and we want to keep doing it." And so if I look back over my career, I wouldn't change a thing. I would do exactly what I've done, work with the people that I've worked with, and consider myself blessed, because I've been around the best EMS providers, I've been around the best medical director, I've been around the best county leadership, and the best EMS administrative team around, and together, I just hope that I can say that we've made a difference. I'm very thankful for your support, very thankful for my family's support, and most importantly, I'm thankful to God. So thank you all for allowing me to be here tonight.
As we frequently say on retirements, it's a very mixed thoughts that we have. We certainly wish you well, but we really don't want to see you go, but we look forward to working with you in your new role. In one of my other roles, as trustee at Rowan Cabarrus Community College, I did inform that board that we did not want to make a habit out of taking good people like you from our staff to their staff, but in this case, we think we'll be the beneficiaries of that as well, and certainly appreciate all you have done for us here in Cabarrus County, I think specifically for this board, the amount of time that you have dedicated to trying to educate us. You know, when we have questions, you always have answers. When we've needed to, you've put us in the truck and took us out on the road and devoted time to that, so that means a lot to us in the way that we try to do our job. And I think that I have had the opportunity to accept some statewide awards on your behalf at meetings over the past several years in a row, and so those efforts do not go unnoticed, and we appreciate you making all of us look good, not only here in Cabarrus County, but across the state of North Carolina as well. So thank you very much, and I'm sure there are other commissioners that might have some comments to make. Please feel free, or we've said it all. Yeah, well, best wishes.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Okay, next item on our agenda is a proclamation recognizing National Donate Life Month of April 2018, and I think we have Kate McCullough from Life Share here with us tonight to make a few comments about that.
Good evening. I just wanted to take a moment to thank the Board of Commissioners for taking a minute to recognize Donate Life Month on behalf of the 115,000 Americans who are waiting for a life-saving transplant and the 3,000 North Carolinians who are waiting. Every time someone says yes to organ donation, it gives hope to those people who are waiting. So every time we take a moment to recognize it, that makes a big difference. So thank you for your time.
Great. We thank you for being with us tonight, and because this effort and this proclamation has very special meaning to Commissioner Lynn Shue, I've asked him if he would read that proclamation for us tonight.
Gladly. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Proclamation, National Donate Life Month 2018, whereas more than 115,000 men, women, and children in the United States currently need life-saving organ transplants, and nearly 3,000 of those people are North Carolinians, and whereas an average of 20 people awaiting transplants die each day because there is a severe shortage of donated organs, and whereas every eight minutes, another name is added to the national transplant waiting list, and whereas providing facts about donation and dispelling misinformation and myths are key to increasing the number of people who sign up as donors, and whereas the North Carolina Division of Motor Vehicles plays a critical role with over 5 million North Carolinians in the state's donor registry having registered when receiving a driver's license or a state ID card, and whereas one organ donor can save the lives of up to eight people and improve many more lives through tissue and cornea donation, and whereas North Carolinians are encouraged to get the facts about donation, discuss their wishes with their family, and sign up as donors via the North Carolina DMV or online at www.donatlifenc.org, register, and whereas residents of Cabarrus County have been touched by donation as recipients of life-saving transplants and as members of donor families who have literally given others a second chance at life. And now it be resolved, we, the members of the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2018 to be the National Donate Life Month in Cabarrus County, and urge our residents to give serious thought to the importance of eye, organ, and tissue donation, and to consider joining the North Carolina Donor Registry, and further to notify their family members that they have done so, adopted this 19th day of March 2018. And I wanted to just add a couple of comments. Some of you may or may not know, one of the reasons this proclamation means so much to me is because I am a double recipient of organ donation. I received a heart transplant in November of 1995. I'm one of the oldest living recipients at this time, soon be 23 years, and then I'm also a recipient of a kidney transplant in '02. So it means a lot to me. The lady that gave me a kidney, she's doing just fine. She's my next-door neighbor, and she's doing good, I'm doing good, and the county's got me working, so I'm busy. But I really appreciate, Mr. Chairman, the opportunity to read this proclamation, and with that, I'd make a motion that we approve the proclamation.
I'll second that.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to adopt the proclamation for National Donate Life Month. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes, and we do have a request for a photo with this proclamation. And who is doing that? Do we need to go down or do it from here?
Go down.
Okay. Commissioner Shue, would you join me if we could go down?
Will. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, our next item, four, is a proclamation proclaiming Fair Housing Month for April 2018, and I have asked Commissioner Honeycutt if she would read that proclamation, since that's in her area of expertise as well.
Thank you. Fair Housing Month proclamation, whereas April 11, 2018 marks the 50th anniversary of the passage of the Fair Housing Act Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, as amended, which enunciates a national policy of fair housing without regard to race, color, religion, familial status, handicap, and national origin, and encourages fair housing opportunities for all. And whereas the Central Carolina Association of Realtors, Inc. is committed to the highlight the Fair Housing Act by continuing to address discrimination in our community, to support programs that will educate the public about the right to equal housing opportunities, and to plan partnership efforts with other organizations to help assure everyone of their right to fair housing, and whereas the National Association of Realtors Code of Ethics commits all realtors to providing equal professional services without discrimination based on race, color, religion, sex, familial status, handicap, sexual orientation, gender identity, and national origin, and now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Commissioners for Cabarrus County, North Carolina, do hereby resolve that April 2018 being Fair Housing Month begins a year-long commemoration of the Fair Housing Act in Cabarrus County, and urges all citizens to wholeheartedly...
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. And we move to item five, which is proclamation for National County Government Month. And I will read that proclamation. National County Government Month, April 2018, serving the underserved. Whereas, the nation's 3,069 counties, serving more than 300 million Americans, provide essential services to create healthy, safe, and vibrant. And whereas, counties move America forward by providing health care, administering justice, keeping communities safe, creating economic opportunities, and much more. And whereas, Cabarrus County and all counties take pride in their responsibility to protect and enhance the health, welfare, and safety of its residents in efficient and cost-effective ways. And whereas, through Nat, the National Association of Counties, President Roy Charles Brooks, serving the underserved initiative, NACO is focusing on the critical role counties play in breaking multi-generational cycles of poverty. And whereas, in order to remain healthy, vibrant, and safe, America's counties provide public health, justice, safety, infrastructure, transportation, technology, environmental stewardship, and economic services that play a key role in everything from residents' daily commutes to emergency response. And whereas, each year since 1991, the National Association of Counties has encouraged counties across the country to actively promote their own programs and services to the public they serve. And now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Commissioners for Cabarrus County, North Carolina, do hereby resolve that April 2018 is National County Government Month and encourage all county officials, employees, schools, and residents to participate in county government activities. So, do I hear a motion to adopt this proclamation?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. And we move now to informal public comments. I do have three cards here that have been submitted. Each person, if you would come to the podium and speak into the microphone and tell us your name and address. And first, we have Marcia Morris.
Hello, I'm Marcia Morris. I'm here on behalf of the Friends of the Mount Pleasant Public Library, and my address is Brush Arbor Road in Concord. And I'm here just to report to you on the efforts of the Friends of the Mount Pleasant Library towards seeing an expansion of our library space. As you know, the Mount Pleasant branch of the library, though boasting more visits per capita than the other three branches combined, has significantly less square footage, about a third of the space that Harrisburg, which is the next smallest branch, has. I want to tell you about some of the ways this lack of space is affecting operations. The community room also houses the Young Adult Collection, so that when there's a program or a meeting going on, there's no access to those books. Likewise, the staff kitchen and a storage area are accessible only through the community room, so those are cut off during programming. We have staff members whose only workspace is the circulation desk. The location and layout of the Children's Collection doesn't allow space for browsing, lounging, or reading, which is what children should be able to do in a library. Tables for group studying or tutoring, something that goes on just about every afternoon at the library, are very limited. Often tutors are taking students outdoors because there's not space for them in the library to work. And the tables that are there are located within just feet of the children's section and their computers. We have only three chairs where patrons can sit and read, and we only have one table where adults can sit and work. The purpose of the Friends, of course, is to support and encourage our library, interest in our library. So, our specific purpose now has become to see that our library is expanded for the betterment of our community. In order to get this process started, we've begun fundraising, and we have found enthusiastic support from the Mount Pleasant community and the surrounding area. We're doing all we can to be ready for the time when you commissioners say go, and when then we can get the job done. So, please let me encourage you to make that day soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Amber Pope.
Hey, I'm Amber Pope, and my address is 8812 Valley Street, Mount Pleasant. I'm a board member and the secretary of the Mount Pleasant Friends of the Library. And I just wanted to talk a little bit about our fundraising and kind of update you on that. At our annual play in February, we officially kicked off our fundraising campaign, and in one night, we raised over $1,500. That's the kind of enthusiasm and support we have. You know, many people were hearing about it for the first time, and they were just excited because our library is a hub for our community. With that being said, we're poised, we're ready to grow, we want to meet the future. And we came tonight to let you know that we're excited, and we hope that you guys will get excited and give us your support as we work together toward this goal. So, thank you for working with us to expand our library.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tim Wax.
Hello, my name's Tim Wax, and I appreciate you giving a few minutes just to speak to you. I live at 6835 Manatee Drive in Concord, Lake Shore Estates, off of Miami Church Road. My family and I moved to Cabarrus County back in 1994 and been a, a resident of Cabarrus County since then, and actually moved out to the Mount Pleasant area just a couple of years after that. So, my family, all four of my children have grown up in Mount Pleasant, gone to Mount Pleasant schools, and we really feel like Mount Pleasant is a real sort of gem of a little small town in Cabarrus County. And, you know, we see the library as, as a real important part of that, of that community. My wife and I were asked to be part of the fundraising committee for the Friends of the Mount Pleasant Library, and we were certainly very glad to do that. So, just here today to raise awareness and hopefully glean your support for expansion of that, of that facility. Over the years, the last several years, Mount Pleasant has certainly grown a lot. We have new businesses, new restaurants out there, new single-family homes, apartments. There are a lot of people there, and that community has really outgrown the, the library that's there now. So, again, just wanted to make everyone aware of that and hopefully glean your support as we try to move forward with the expansion of that facility. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, and our fourth speaker is here at the podium with us, Napur Pareek.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Napur Pareek. I'm a Cabarrus County Youth Commission President, as well as a student at the Early College High School. I and my friend created an event last year called Building Bridges. We created 110 hygiene kits and distributed to the homeless people in Charlotte area and the surrounding area. This year, we decided to do something to help the people in our community as, as much as we possibly can. This year, we decided to do something with cancer patients. Both me and my friend both have had people in our family who have gone through cancer or currently who are battling cancer. We decided to create an event called Caps for Care. We are going to be creating caps, ball caps, any type of hats that we can donate to the Living Children's Hospital for children who are currently fighting with cancer. Our goal is to create as many hats as we possibly can. We don't have enough material, so we are asking the community to donate as much as material as they possibly can, such as yarn, hats, crocheting, anything dealing with that. You can donate that at the Early College High School's front office. If you have any questions on the project and our mission, you can email us at earlycollegeprojectsandevents@gmail.com. Let's come together and help our community whenever there is specifically in need. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I think that concludes all of our informal public comments. We now move to our consent agenda, and you all have a copy of that before you. These are all items that we have discussed previously at our work session last week. So, do I hear a motion that we approve our consent agenda as presented?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes, and we move to new business. First item is from Emergency Management, Adoption of Ordinance, Amending Chapter 34, Fire Prevention and Protection of the Cabarrus County Code of Ordinance. And we are happy to have Bobby Smith, and well, I see Steve Langer, and Bobby's here as well, but Steve's going to talk. Welcome.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the board. We're here for you this, before you this evening to request a public hearing be held on proposed changes to the Fire Prevention and Protection Ordinance of Cabarrus County, and that the conclusion of that public hearing adopt the proposed changes. So, myself and Bobby Smith, our EM Director, are here if there are any questions.
Okay, thank you. And we do have need of a public hearing. This has been advertised, and of course, this is also an item that we discussed at our work session last week. So, at this time, I'll open the public hearing and invite anyone to the podium that would like to speak on this matter. Okay, hearing no one, I'll close the public hearing. And at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the, or for the adoption of ordinance amending Chapter 34, Fire Prevention and Protection of the Cabarrus County Code of Ordinance.
Please hold on a second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Thank you very much. Okay. Item number two, from Finance Resolution relating to the installment financing contract for various school projects. And we are happy to have Susan Fearington.
Okay, tonight before you have a resolution enabling Cabarrus County to enter into one or more short and, or long-term financing contracts with our Cabarrus County Development Corporation for an amount not to exceed $55 million to finance all or a portion of the cost of acquitting, constructing, and equipping public school facilities, community college facilities, land acquisition, and various related real and personal property improvements. As you'll recall during our work session, the projects that we're talking about tonight are the Southwest Elementary School for Cabarrus County Schools, the Advanced Technologies Center for the Rowan Cabarrus Community College, 20 mobile units at Cabarrus County, Cabarrus County Schools, and two HVAC replacements, one at J. M. Freeze Middle School and one at Mount Pleasant High School. In addition to that, there will be a land purchase, $1.7 million that we're going to be distributing to Rowan Cabarrus Community College for their land. At this time, the North Carolina General Statute requires a public hearing, and we also have a need for the resolution to be read and approved.
Okay.
If there's any questions before that.
Okay, any questions for Ms. Fearington? Okay, we do, as she stated, need a public hearing, so at this time, I would open the public hearing and invite anyone to the podium that would like to discuss the previously mentioned project. Okay, seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. And I believe you said the proclamation needed to be read, and if I can find it, we'll be in business. Page 187. Page 187, okay. I was going to read the entire document, but it looks like I only have to read one paragraph, so that's good. Resolution relating to long-term installation contract financing of various public projects in an aggregate principal amount up to $55 million. Interim installment contract financings for such projects in an aggregate principal amount up to $55 million, and the execution and delivery by the Cabarrus County Development Corporation of one or more series of limited obligation bonds and/or certificates of participation related thereto. Does that cover the part that needs to be read? Or we need to keep going?
I think you need to keep reading, Mr. Chairman. That was just the title to it.
Very good. That was just the title, okay. Whereas, the Board of Commissioners desires to undertake a proposed plan of financing in an aggregate principal amount of up to $55 million, which plan would involve the entry by the county into one or more long-term installment financing contracts with the Cabarrus County Development Corporation, or one or more third parties pursuant to North Carolina General Statutes 160A-20 as amended, the proceeds which would be used to pay for all or a portion of the cost of acquiring, constructing, and equipping new public school facilities, and expanding, rehabilitating, renovating, and equipping existing public school facilities, included but not limited to, one new elementary school and numerous mobile units, constructing and equipping new community college facilities, and expanding, rehabilitating, renovating, and equipping existing community college facilities for Rowan Cabarrus Community College, including but not limited to, the Advanced Technology Center, the acquisition of numerous parcels of real property for either the county or Rowan Cabarrus Community College, including all improvements located thereon, if any, the acquisition of any necessary rights of ways and easements related to each of the foregoing and various real and personal property improvements related to each of the foregoing collectively, the projects, and under one, under said one or more long-term installment financing contract, the county would secure the repayment by the county of the monies advanced pursuant to such one or more long-term installment financing contract or contracts by granting a security interest and in, and lean on all or some portion of the projects, or all or some portion of the real property upon which the projects are located. Whereas, as part of said proposed plan of financing, the corporation may also execute and deliver one or more series of limited obligation bonds and/or certificates of participation in said one or more long-term installment financing contract or contracts by granting a security interest and in, and lean on all or some portion of the projects, or all or some portion of the real property upon which the projects are located. Whereas, as part of said proposed plan of financing, the corporation may also execute and deliver one or more series of limited obligation bonds and/or certificates of participation in said one or more long-term installment financing contract or contracts in an aggregate principal amount not exceeding $55 million to finance the advancement of monies to the county pursuant to said one or more long-term installment financing contracts between the county and the corporation, or one or more other third parties. Whereas, as part of the proposed plan of financing for the projects, the Board of Commissioners further desires to authorize interim financing for all or some portion of the projects in an aggregate, aggregate principal amount of up to $55 million, which would involve the entry by the county into one or more short-term installment financing contracts with one or more third parties pursuant to North Carolina General Statutes 160A-20 as amended, the proceeds of which would be used to provide interim financing for all or some portion of the projects pending execution and delivery of said one or more long-term financing contracts and the related limited obligation bonds and/or certificates of participation, if any. And under one or more short-term, short-term installment financing contracts, the county would secure the repayment. would secure the repayment by the county of the monies advanced pursuant to such short-term installment financing contracts by granting a security interest in and lean on all or some portion of the projects, or all or some portion of the real property upon which the projects are located, and whereas, as required by North Carolina General Statute One Sixty A dash twenty, the Board of Commissioners has heretofore held a public hearing concerning the one or more short-term installment financing contracts and the one or more long-term installment financing contracts to be executed and delivered by the county, and the transactions contemplated thereby and associated therewith. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners as follows. Section one, the Board of Commissioners hereby finds and confirms that the projects and the financing thereof by one or more short-term contracts and one or more long-term contracts is necessary and expedient for the county. Two, financing of the projects by one or more short-term contracts and one or more long-term contracts under the circumstances is preferable to a bond issue by the county. Three, the sums to fall due under one or more short-term contracts and one or more long-term contracts are adequate and not excessive for their proposed purpose. Four, the county's debt management procedures and policies are good, and its debt will continue to be managed in strict compliance with law. And five, the increase in taxes, if any, necessary to meet the sums to fall due under one or more short-term contracts and one or more long-term contracts will not be excessive. And six, the county is not in default regarding any of its debt service obligations. Section two, the appropriate officers of the county are hereby authorized and directed to do any and all things necessary, appropriate, or convenient to effectuate the foregoing and the proposed plan of financing, including without limitation filing one or more applications with the North Carolina Local Government Commission, seeking approval of the plan of financing, or any component thereof, the publication of any required notices related thereto, consideration and negotiation of proposals from one or more third parties regarding the one or more short-term installment financing contracts included in the proposed plan of financing, consideration and negotiation of proposals from one or more underwriters, or one or more other third parties regarding the one or more long-term installment financing contracts included in the proposed plan of financing, and consideration and negotiation of the terms of the proposed plan of financing, or any component thereof, and the relevant legal documentation. Thereupon, motion, I think, does that, did I cover it all?
Just read the section three, and then you can entertain a motion.
Section three, this resolution shall become effective immediately upon its adoption. And at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Second motion approved.
Okay, do I hear a second? Is there any discussion? Or would you like for me to read through that again? Okay, hearing no discussion, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. We are happy to have for item G three, Dr. Carol Spalding from Rowan Cabarrus Community College to speak with us about purchase of property for the college.
Good evening. I'm here to thank you for your support, to help us expand the, the land around South Campus. We think it's a great investment for the future. We look forward to working with you very much, and expansion of the college's mission. Pleased to know that you're an Early College student. Congratulations. Yeah, very proud of what you're doing right now. And we just wanted to thank you. We look forward to working with you and making all the financial arrangements that look like they're gonna come together. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we have discussed this at length earlier in our work session. I think we have a wonderful collaboration between Cabarrus and Rowan Counties with the college, and it is, it's pretty impressive to see that the number of Cabarrus County residents currently enrolled at the college have exceeded pretty significantly those from Rowan County, so they're definitely growing rapidly, which necessitates the purchase of this additional property. So do I hear a motion to authorize Rowan Cabarrus Community College to contract for the purchase of the land with the county funding of one million, seven hundred twenty thousand dollars bond, and approve the budget revision and project ordinance? Rowan Cabarrus Community College will be responsible for all additional costs incurred to complete the land transaction from their finances.
One million, seven hundred twenty-one thousand.
I'm sorry, correct that amount to one million, seven hundred twenty-one thousand dollars.
I'll move for approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion, motion passes four to one. Okay, next item on our agenda is G four, discussion of an offer for Mount Pleasant Middle School, and we're happy to have Kyle Billiford to talk with us.
Good evening. If you recall from the work session, we did receive two bids for the Mount Pleasant Middle School. We reviewed both of them, and we're asking commission to go ahead and approve the one that was received from Corporate Funding Associates LLC. That was what staff's recommendation was, that is, the larger value, but that would allow us to enter the upset bid process. I've worked with the county attorney and our real estate consultant to draft up that actual upset bid letter that would be advertised if the board does choose to accept an offer and enter that process.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Billiford?
Will you clarify that that is the old Mount Pleasant Middle School site and not the current one?
Yes, I will. Yes, that is the old Mount Pleasant Middle School located at eight-three-two-five North Carolina Highway Forty-nine North.
Okay, any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, just want to add on there that accepting this as the, the project to move forward in no way binds you to selecting this process, or to selecting this bid at the end of the process. This just gets the process moving forward so that the, the upset bid process can start.
Very good.
That's right, it would be a conditional acceptance if you so choose to do that.
Right. And for the benefit of the public, once this bid is accepted, then it's open for upset bids for what period?
Ten days.
Ten days.
Mm-hmm, when the posting goes out.
Okay. Commissioner Cogger.
I just wanted clarification on which ballfields are not, I know there's ballfields that are not included.
The small parcel across the street that houses the three small ballfields that the youth associations use was not included in the advertised parcel.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, do I hear a motion in regard to this matter?
I'm not looking at the formal motion.
I don't think one is included.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the offer for sale of the old Mount Pleasant Middle School site located eighty-three-twenty-five North Carolina Forty-nine in Mount Pleasant, the recommended offer that Mr. Billiford has presented.
Conditionally, as we discussed, subject to the upset bid process.
Correct.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? And I think it was made very clear that at the end of this, we still have an option to review. We're not committed to those offers.
That is correct.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Thank you. Okay, next item is G five, and this is a resolution supporting legal action regarding to the opioid crisis, and we're going to hear from County Manager Downs and Attorney Cook, both on that item.
You can go ahead and start, and I'll finish it.
This is a proposed resolution declaring there to be an opioid crisis in Cabarrus County, and declaring the causes of the crisis to be a public nuisance. And part of the reason for this resolution is to recognize the seriousness of the crisis, and to accord it that legal status of being considered a public nuisance. As a practical matter, what that will mean is that in the anticipated litigation that the county intends to institute against the manufacturing distributors of opioids, that one of the claims in that lawsuit would be that there is a public, that it has created a public nuisance in Cabarrus County, the proliferation of those drugs on the basis on which it has been done. So we would like to have the board entertain passing this resolution because it is a key component of that future litigation that we plan to pursue. And in connection with that, as mentioned earlier, we have, the board, a couple of months ago, and as part of its decision to pursue litigation of this sort, along with most of the rest of the counties across the country, had tasked the county manager and me with interviewing different national firms with expertise in this area. And pursuant to that directive, Mr. Downs and I interviewed a number of different firms, and made a suggestion to the board last month with reference to a particular group of national firms, that they be the ones to be selected. And those firms, if you recall correctly, or if you recall from that, is the Simmons Hanley Conroy Firm, Kruger Dickinson Firm, Von Briesen and Roper, and Ward Black Law. Those four firms will work collaboratively in representing Cabarrus County with reference to this litigation. Mr. Downs and I have also reviewed the proposed engagement letter agreement, which is typically, typically the form of agreement that these types of relationships have, and we've vetted the language and have it in a form for approval. So if you are, since you've already agreed to move forward with it by prior act, if you do in fact pass this resolution, then the next step after that would be to, to entertain a motion to approve the engagement letter agreement with these four firms that I mentioned, to represent the county with reference to these claims against the opioid manufacturers and distributors, and to authorize county manager to sign the agreement, subject to any final review by myself.
Okay, thank you. Did you have some comments before I read the resolution?
I, I do not have any comments, and I know that you just read that long one, so I would volunteer to read that for you if you would like, but you can, if you would care.
Please, please go right ahead.
I was hoping you were gonna say that. Declaring there to be an opioid crisis in Cabarrus County, and declaring the causes of the crisis to be a public nuisance. Whereas, the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners has the authority, has a statutory authority pursuant to North Carolina General Statute One Fifty-three A dash one-twenty-one, to take actions necessary to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of the citizens and residents of Cabarrus County. And whereas, the board has made aware, has been made aware of the existence of significant number of cases involving opioid abuse, addiction, morbidity, and mortality in the county. And whereas, the board has also been made aware of the impacts of opioid abuse, addiction, morbidity, and mortality of the citizens and residents of the county, and of the impacts on the services provided by the county to its citizens and residents, including but not limited to human services, emergency medical services, public health services through the Cabarrus Health Alliance, law enforcement, and other emergency services. And whereas, there is significant evidence to suggest that manufacturers and distributors of, and distributors of opioids have aggressively marketed their sale to physicians under the guise that prescribing these opioids is medically necessary for virtually any ailment that causes pain, and with the assurance that prescribing large doses of opioids creates little or no risk of addiction. And whereas, such tactics, if proven true, are violations of various federal and state laws designed to monitor and control the dispensing of opioids, and constitute tortuous acts, creating liability of such manufacturers and distributors to the county and its citizens and residents for the physical and financial harm caused. And whereas, in addition to the prescribing of opioids as described above, whether lawful or otherwise, there is significant evidence to suggest that a large number of such prescribed opioids get diverted to persons who use them but for whom such drugs have not been prescribed, and who take such drugs recreationally, and often to support an addiction. And whereas, the financial impact to the county from these circumstances is substantial, particularly in view of the fact that a significant number of persons addicted to opioids, and the family members they support are uninsured or underinsured, and rely on the provision of county services without reimbursement to the county. And whereas, apart from the financial impact, there is a human impact resulting from these circumstances on the parents, spouses, children, siblings, and friends who witness the suffering, and sometimes the loss of life, of a loved one, not to mention the loss to the community of the gifts and talented, and talents of such persons. And whereas, these circumstances are real and pervasive, and unreasonably interfere with the public health, safety, peace, comfort, and convenience of the citizens and residents of Cabarrus County, and of the county itself. And whereas, on the advice of legal counsel, it appears to the board that the county has valid claims for damages against the opioid manufacturers and distributors, and possibly others for violations of constitutional, statutory, decisional laws, and common law. And whereas, it appears that such claims are for the, are for past costs incurred by the county, but also for significant future costs that will be incurred to pay for additional county services, and for treatment, rehabilitation, and counseling. Now therefore be it resolved by the county, by the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners at its regular monthly meeting, and with a quorum present as follows, that there exists a crisis in Cabarrus County with the use and abuse of opioids, that the board intends to take all reasonable actions necessary to seriously lessen or eliminate this crisis, that the board declares the opioid crisis to be a public nuisance pursuant to Article Fifty-seven of Chapter One, One Oh Six of the North Carolina General Statutes, and North Carolina General Statute One Fifty-three A dash one forty, that needs to be abated by whatever reasonable legal means available, and that the board shall retain legal counsel to investigate and pursue, and pursue physical, excuse me, pursue civil legal action against those responsible for causing and perpetuating the opioid crisis in Cabarrus County, adopted this nineteenth day, March two thousand eighteen.
Okay, you have heard the resolution. This is, and without getting too, too much on the soapbox, this is a serious issue in Cabarrus County. We have seen reports over the past year, which at sometimes Cabarrus County was number one in the state in overdoses, and emergency room visits, and sub, resulting in numerous It makes me almost feel bad that I was pleased to see us on the, not be number one on the list, but we're still number four, and that's number four in the state. So that's, that is nothing to be happy about, or to brag about, although it is showing some improvement, but the, the cost of this, the human cost, is tremendous. I would, I have been reading a book- I would, I have been reading a book that I would encourage anybody listening to read that truly goes a long way in explaining the history of this opioid crisis that we're in, and how, how that began from the prescription end, also as well as the illegal part that seems to follow. The name of that book is Dreamland. The author is Sam Kinonis. I would encourage anybody that's interested in learning more about this to, to read that book. It is, it is eye-opening, and it is extremely frightening as well. But with all that being said, are there any other discussions before we move to a vote?
I just wanted to make a comment, Mr. Chairman, if I could, because not only, as you mentioned, is this a serious problem in Cabarrus County, but it's also a nationwide problem. And when we were in Washington last week, and even the week before that, two different trips for legislative issues and that kind of thing, the current presidential administration has made this one of their priorities, to try to help fight the opioid addiction problem across the country. And hopefully, there's going to be some money made available at some point to us, but the cost is enormous, and getting more. And we learned just as of today, right here in Cabarrus County, that we had as many as six overdoses, as many as six, to this very day. And so, it's a problem that we've got to take serious, and, you know, it's, it's just got to be done.
Thank you. Any other discussion? At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution supporting legal action regarding the opioid crisis.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. And if I could indulge Mr. Cook to read the proposed motion on engagement of the legal firm.
I'll be happy to, Mr. Chairman. This would be the motion that you should entertain, and that would be a motion to approve the engagement letter agreement with Simmons Hanley Conroy LLC, Kruger Dickinson LLC, Von Briesen and Roper SC, and Ward Black Law, to represent the county with reference to claims against opioid manufacturers and distributors, and to authorize the county manager to finalize the language and sign the agreement, subject to review by the county attorney.
Okay, do I hear a motion to adopt, to adopt the previously read motion?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes, and we move to item G six, from Finance, Kannapolis Middle Schools' construction change orders. And we have Susan Ferrington, and I see Dr. Buckwell is also here, available if we need him.
Correct. Kannapolis City Schools has requested that Cabarrus County fund the change order number seven, in the amount of four hundred and twenty-four thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars for the Kannapolis Middle School project. Edison Ford is the contractor. As you recall from the Board of Commissioners' agenda work session last week, the two largest items included in the change order are unsuitable soles for one hundred and thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and forty-three dollars, and theatrical lighting items for one hundred and twenty-five thousand, four oh four. And I know at that time, there were additional questions and discussion, and so at this point in time, just maybe direction on what we need to do from here.
Okay, any questions from Ms. Ferrington?
Did we ever get a list from the architect, or from Edison, about what was done and what wasn't done? I didn't see anything. There might have been something on email, but I didn't get to see anything before the meeting.
I have not seen a response from Edison Ford or Mosley as far as all. I don't, I haven't received anything from Edison Ford or Mosley as to a response to that question, sir.
So I'm assuming that we placed that question to them, but they just didn't respond, as of yet?
Yes, sir. That question was clearly placed to them last Monday?
At our meeting.
Yeah, last Monday, at the meeting, and I have not seen a response from them. The unsuitable soles were a compilation of the entire project that came in, if you recall from that meeting, so that was, I must, I can't assume that it was answered well, but it was answered there.
Right. But the other things, such as, I know the chairman and I have talked a couple of times about this, the theatrical lighting, has that been done?
That has not, that part of the project is part of the auditorium, and it has not been started yet, no, sir.
And I do recall them saying that some of the things on that list had been done, but most of them had not been done. That's what I was trying to find out, you know.
Exactly what had been done.
And then, and Susan, you know, as far as, I mean, obviously, we got to pay the bills. I mean, we all know that. We not, we don't go around beating people out of their money. But the thing is, though, we all know what happens sometimes when you pay things to people for things that haven't been done, where that leaves us. And so, I'd like to know where that leaves us. I mean, I don't know what, that's a question for you to answer, or if it would be for Mr. Cook to answer. Because this has, this has bothered me. I don't, I don't mind telling you. I mean, I know Chip, you and I have talked about it, and
Yes, sir.
We've talked about it, and it's bothered me. And I just need more input than what we had last week.
I can tell you, as a, as part of an industry practice, the approval of the change order doesn't necessarily mean that it's getting paid in full right after we approve it. So the contractor on their next application for payment, and subsequent ones after that, will, you know, be billing for whatever work is done on the, the change order. That would be the normal course of action. I would assume that's what we're doing, and not necessarily, because they're getting approval for the work. But there was a legitimate question last week of how much has been done, and how much has not been done, that I think Mr. Schu was looking for. But I just wanted to appease at least that part of the concern of, of how it will get paid.
It is an amendment to the
It won't be done before the work's done. They won't get paid before they get through the work.
It is an amendment to the contract, and to the contract sum. That, that part is true, yes.
That's correct. And to date, this money has not been paid out, because we have not paid the city of Kannapolis to do so. So it's been approved, the, the work has been done, but there has been no payment for any, any of this.
Okay, any other questions?
I did want to point out that there was some discussion Monday about using some of their furniture, fixture, and equipment funding that has not been spent. As of last week, they had four hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars still left in their furniture equipment. I was able to get with Will Crabtree and find out what money, what part of that four hundred and eighty-eight thousand has not been committed, or maybe bills haven't been turned in, or even a purchase order, anything has not been issued for that money. He has told me that he would use three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of that money, so we have a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars remaining that could be used towards this change order. That combined with the earlier recommendation of the contra sales tax would cover the change order, and not have to dip into the commissioner's contingency. Just wanted to point that out.
Okay.
Well, I would like to make one other comment. I guess I would like to ask county manager and, and staff to see if there's a different process by which we can manage the change order process. Because basically, what we currently have is an owner's rep and a GC out building a project. Well, whatever proposed change orders come up, and they have the discussion, ultimately, we're, the owner's the one that's responsible. So there's, and it's, it's not unique to Kannapolis. I mean, we've got this issue with Cabarrus County schools as well, and we've got a new high school under construction, and we also have an elementary school coming up. So I, my request is just that maybe we, we put our heads together and figure out maybe some way to have a little more involvement before, as a, as a PCO, a proposed change order turns into an actual executed change order, that we've got at least some sort of say, or that gets here, before it gets too far down the road, where all we're basically doing at that point in time is paying the bill. And so, you know, I don't think we, I don't need to beat it up any further than that. It's just something I, I would like to see if we can do something different, process-wise.
That is the typical process, that the, the change orders come before this board, prior to being approved, before the work is done. So, some of that has occurred here, some hasn't, so we will definitely take, take heed to your direction there, to make sure that that happens.
Okay, any further questions? Thank you very much.
There's actually a motion for the requested action.
Okay, we're headed that, we're headed that direction.
Okay.
Okay, the requested motion is to approve four hundred and twenty-four thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars to Edison Ford for change order number seven, and authorize the finance director to prepare the appropriate budget amendment and project ordinance. Do I hear such a motion? Well, I will make that motion. Do I hear a second?
I will second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I think Commissioner Cogger's comments are very appropriate. What happens is, we, we find ourselves in a situation where much, and of course, we're not sure how much of it's been done, and have, but a great deal of this has already been done. So, you know, the question is, and I think the question that the public asks sometimes, is what, what happens if you don't approve this change order? Well, there'd be quite a bit that would happen, and we'd be involved in quite a bit of legal action, and we would have some subcontractors that have worked hard, done their jobs, that wouldn't get paid. So it, it does kind of put us in an awkward position.
Would you please clarify that the, as was stated by Ms. Ferrington, that the first amount towards this total would come from the furniture fixtures and equipment amount that has not been, it's not been, I'm trying to think of the word.
They're not, they're not committed.
It's not been committed, thank you. They've not been committed, and then the remaining balance of the fund would come from the sales tax resources. I would ask if you would clarify that, your motion.
Happy to add that to the motion.
Yes, I'm happy to second that.
Right.
I think I lost my.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, we move to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Item G seven is being moved to April. That is some discussion of courthouse recording devices. We talked about that at our work session, and then we'll talk about it again next month. We now move to appointments to boards and committees. First is the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee. The terms of appointment for Teresa Dakens and Keith Conrad ended February twenty-eighth, two thousand eighteen. Both Ms. Dakens and Mr. Conrad do not wish to be considered for another term due to work or family commitments. So at this time, I would move to remove Teresa Dakens and Keith Conrad from the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee roster, and thank them for their service.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Next, we have appointments to the Agricultural Advisory Board. The terms of appointment on the Agricultural Advisory Board for Tommy Porter and Leslie Cook expired on January thirty-first, two thousand eighteen. Both have served on this board since two thousand twelve. An exception for the length of service provision of the appointment policy will be needed for them. We have letters of recommendation from the Cooperative Extension Director regarding their reappointments, and that is included in your agenda. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to reappoint, to, to reappoint Tommy Porter and Leslie Cook to the Agricultural Advisory Board for three-year terms, ending January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one, including an exception to the length of service provision of the appointment policy for both.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. We now have the Cabarrus appointments and removals to the Cabarrus County Youth Commission. The following appointments are recommended by the Cabarrus County Youth Commission. Brandon Gillespie from Cox Mill High School, and Lance Kegel from Central Cabarrus High School. Melia Eaton, Mount Pleasant High School representative, and Amaya Williams, Cox Mill High School representative, have resigned from their positions on the commission. McKay Burke from Mount Pleasant High School representative has not been able to meet the attendance policy. It is requested to remove all three from the roster. At this time, I would entertain a motion to appoint Brandon Gillespie from Cox Mill High School to the Cabarrus County Youth Commission for a term expiring June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. I would also entertain a motion to appoint Lance Kegel to the Cabarrus County Youth Commission as a Central Cabarrus High School representative for a term expiring June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. And I would at this time entertain a motion to remove McKay Burke, Mount Pleasant High School, Melia Eaton, Mount Pleasant High School, and Amaya Williams, Cox Mill High School, from the Cabarrus County Youth Commission roster, and thank them for their service.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes, and we move to appointments to the Home and Community Care Block Grant Advisory Committee. Cindy Hall has submitted an application to serve on the Home Community Care Block Grant Advisory Committee as the Human Services Designee for Disabled Adults. A letter of recommendation in that regard has been included in your agenda. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to appoint Cindy Hall to the Home and Community Care Block Grant Advisory Committee as the Human Services Designee Disabled Adults Representative.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. We now move to appointments to the Industrial Facilities and Pollution Control Financing Authority. David Black's term on the Industrial Facilities and Pollution Control Financing Authority expired January tenth, two thousand eighteen. Mr. Black is willing to serve another term. He has served since two thousand. If reappointed, an exception to the length of service provision of the appointment policy will be needed for him. The authority meets on an as-needed basis, and the county attorney serves as the contact for this authority. So at this time, I would entertain So at this time, I would entertain a motion to reappoint David Black to the Industrial Facilities and Pollution Control Financing Authority for a six-year term, ending January 10, 2024, including an exception to the length of service provision of the appointment policy.
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. We have a number of vacancies that we would like to make the public aware of on various boards and committees, and we would encourage folks to apply to those positions. An application is included with each of our agendas that are published online, and they can certainly call the county manager's office as well if you have any questions or need assistance in applying for those positions. Active Living in Parks has four vacancies. Adult Home Care Community Advisory Committee has seven vacancies. The, I think we just filled the ones for Agricultural Advisory Board. Animal Protection Advisory Board has two vacancies. Extraterritorial Jurisdiction, Concord Planning Commission, has one. Home and Community Care Block Grant Committee has one. Four for Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, one for Mount Pleasant Planning Board and Board of Adjustment, seven for the Nursing Home Community Advisory Board, and two for the Transportation Advisory Board, and currently six vacancies on the Youth Commission. So as you can tell, there are many opportunities for folks to serve that might be interested. We move now to reports, and Item 1 from the Board of Commissioners, updates from various members who serve as liaisons to municipalities or on various boards or committees. Does anyone have updates they'd like to share at this time? Okay, hearing none. Are there any general comments from board members? Okay, we do not have need of a closed session tonight, so at this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye. All opposed, no, and we stand adjourned. Thank you.